Good evening. I am Joseph Pereira, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It is 6:00 PM on Thursday, December 21st, 2023. We are meeting at one government center in the first-floor hearing room. Pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices by Fall River Government Television, by Craig Salvador, recording both video and audio versions. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now, and I will make a public announcement of your intention. Our recording secretary this evening is Nina Krueger, sitting to my immediate right. Present this evening are permanent members John Frank, our Vice Chairman, James Colkins, our Clerk, Dan DePere, and Ricky Sahadi. Also present is alternate member Eric Kelly. With us also this evening, to my far left, is the Director of Engineering and Planning, Mr. Dan Aguirre, and to my far right, Chris Pereno, our Assistant Planner. Nina, have all petitions to be considered, been properly advertised, and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the ZBA and Mass. General Law 40A as amended?
Yes.
I therefore declare the December 21st, 2023 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River, open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including petitioners, abutters, anyone in support, or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chair. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which is, which support the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this is the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A, and is limited in scope and deals with the use and of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of your petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not attorneys and not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect on the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petition and after the decision of the Board has been made. For example, there was a city ordinance 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available in the City Clerk's Office or from the Planning Department. I remind everyone that the Building Inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the Building Inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multi-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board specific matters at the end of the meeting. If anyone wishes to speak at that time, there's a sign-up sheet on the table just outside the door. I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office, and I can, and one cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. Let us begin. We have one item of old business. Item 01, hang on a second. I'm good. Do it again. Item 01, under Old Business, is 1265 Main Street LLC, care of Attorney Peter A. Salino, 101 President Avenue, map 0, I'm sorry, O-16 lot 1. The applicant seeks a variance to demolish the existing structure and rebuild a mixed-use concept consisting of 350 residential apartment units, a parking garage, and retail space in accordance with the submitted plans, waving side yard setback, building height, type of use, and unit count in the BL, Local Business Zoning District, and the HD-1 Housing Development Overlay District. The applicant seeks a special permit to reduce parking requirements. This meeting, this item had been tabled at the November 16th meeting. Attorney Salino is with us, but we also have a letter from him directed to Nina, our Clerk. Dear Nina, as you know, the undersides, the undersign serves as counsel for the applicant in a zoning petition for the above referenced address. I write on behalf of my client to request that the, that the instant petition be dismissed without prejudice. Unfortunately, the closing transaction will not be consummated. Additionally, as you may recall, I provided a sizable deposit check to the City of Fall River at the time of application. Additionally, I have paid on behalf of my client all publication fees, as well as the tabling fee. While I certainly understand that the administrative staff has spent some time and energy processing this application and preparing the legal advertisement and setting the matter down for hearing, I do not think the fee of this magnitude should be retained by the City of Fall River. I know that this, that this is case of first impression of the City of Fall River, but I see, I see no equitable way where the city should claim to such a large but unearned deposit. Accordingly, I respectfully submit to the Board that it should return all deposits in excess of the base filing fee for variance and base filing fee for a special permit. Please provide this letter to your Board for discussion on Thursday, December 21st, 2023. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you for your cooperation and assistance. I remain very truly yours, Peter A. Salino, Esquire Salino and Soviet PC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. For the record, Peter Salino, 550 Locust Street, Fall River. Counsel to the petitioner. As Mr. Chair just indicated, I have made a written motion to withdraw this petition without prejudice. As a result of that, I'm requesting that the Board work with my client to return some of the fee. And when I say some of the fee, just to be clear, this is in excess of $30,000 fee. The base fee for this filing would be $1,800. $1,000 for a commercial variance, 800 for a special permit. So I certainly recognize that the city has spent time and effort on the petition, but we never actually presented the matter to the Board. It was never heard, and so I'd submit to you that I think my client's entitled to some money back as a result of the size of the deposit.
Okay. Thank you. If I can ask either of Nina or Dan, is there precedent for returning fees in withdrawn applications?
We've never had one of this magnitude that's been requested, that hasn't been opened yet.
Uh huh.
And specifically in this case, we had not deposited the fee because we were still dealing with the $100 per unit, and then we had changed it to the 50, so we were waiting to see how that played out. So it was at my recommendation that, that the attorney submitted. If this was a property owner that was the petitioner and had written the check, I may feel a little bit differently about it, but this was an applicant, and through PNS, you know, entered into this filing, and the proposed closing that did not take place was none of his fault. So it would be my recommendation that, that we keep the base fee of, of the variance and the special permit and return the per-unit fee, whether it be 10 units or 350 units, as this one was. I think that's only fair. I do know that the property owner is looking for other properties in the city to keep working in, so we would like to keep that relationship working well at the same time.
Yep, and this is a major developer, and, you know, as noted, this is kind of first impression to the city.
Yeah, I mean, if we had gotten into the hearing and we had potentially hired traffic consultants, and that's what the fee is for, is when we get into the meats and bones of it, if we need that type of review or that type of study done, that we have the funds to do it. We did not get to that point.
So has the 1,800 been deposited at this point where nothing's?
No, we'll get a new check and add over the old check.
Okay. Discussion from the Board at this point? You know, as, we, we should not look upon these fees as a tax, nor should we look upon them as a penalty. They're there so that we can process and bring in, you know, outside consultants if necessary, which we have not done because this has not been fully opened. So I'm looking for any discussion from the Board if there are questions to ask. Otherwise, I would look for a petition, petition, I would look for a motion that would allow us to receive a new check for the $1,800 base fee and just return the, the prior check.
We also have to deal with the request to withdraw.
Yes, I, yeah.
That can all be done at once, right?
Yeah, if you want to do it.
I'll make a motion to withdraw, accept the withdrawal, and return the filing fees up until the base filing.
The base filing fee remains.
We, we did receive a letter from the Historical Commission, which I think we should read into the record.
Well, no, there's, there's been no presentation.
It's, yeah, we haven't opened, so.
I would just add to the motion without prejudice.
Correct.
That's, that's important. Thank you.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second? That was Dan? Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? The hearing, none? Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
And Chairman Pereira, yes?
Thank you. I know my client will appreciate that greatly.
We've had a request from Attorney Mark Levin that item number seven be brought forward due to a scheduling issue that he has. Attorney Salino has, has yielded?
Yes.
So, thank you, sir.
Move that legal instruction, move the item forward.
Motion to change the order of agenda. Second, please.
Second.
On the, on the motion, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Pereira, yes. Item number seven, Catahoula Realty Trust, care of Attorney Mark Levin, 101 President Avenue, map O-16 lot 1. The applicant puts forth a motion to extend time for relief from a previously granted decision dated December 16th, 2021. The applicant wishes to extend the special permit relief for a period of six months commencing on December 16th, 2023. Counsel?
Attorney Mark Levin, Oral Office at 138 Rock Street, Fort Manchester. And first, thank you for your indulgence. This is very simple, a six-month extension to a special permit to complete the work that needs to be done for the billboard sign. Your illustrious city engineer took a job and didn't finish up with my client after because he had to leave. And look, my client had to hire other people, and between getting that done and working with the state for the permitting that has to be, it just didn't get done on time, so we're asking you to allow us another six months so we can complete this work.
Let me ask one question up front. Did the state permit this?
It's in the process, yes.
It's in the process. And I'll remind the Board, looking at the dates, that this has already expired. December 16th was the, was the date. So we're dealing somewhat in arrears.
Well, standard practice is as long as we, as long as they request the extension prior to the expiration, that's, that's stature.
I realize you're in the process with the state, and it would be interesting to see what the state does with it, considering everything has changed. There's no elevated Route 79 zipping by this site anymore, and nothing has been decided as far as what that swath of land is going to look like. So I suppose we, I have, I have some level of concern about it myself. I don't speak for the Board, obviously. So we can grant it and let the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and its majestic wisdom come back and tell us what the best thing is, or do we wait for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the City of Fall River to tell us what's going to happen with the swath of Route 79?
Well, we may not know that for quite a while.
Correct.
To be honest with you, I don't even think the state would consider the removal of Route 79, as this is not on Route 79, this is on DePaul Street. But I can't tell you what, what they would consider. Do I think it can get resolved in the six months? I don't know. That, that might be a push as well, so, but I think it would be fair to give the applicant the ability to, to make that attempt.
Questions, comments from the Board? My scribe, my scribe and clerk is digging through the bylaw. No questions, no comments? If there are none, I would accept.
Let me just, you say the work, it's, the only work that has started on this is the application to the state and, and then, but no.
No, because the, the state has to decide on the height and everything. That's really what it is, the height and the visibility and the illumination. When I was concerned about, we don't think it's going to be a problem to just get it through the state.
I know it's going to go away.
That's my only concern about it, too, is it's just floating around for a while because
there, there was another project planned on that site.
Right, exactly. Timing is everything.
And now, now that's gone away. This is that.
Right, so we're going to go back to finishing this.
Now, this is already two years.
Oh, one year.
One year.
One year. Oh, okay.
If I can turn to, to public comment, is there anybody present that wishes to speak in favor of this petition?
No, he was right, it's two years.
Two years, because it's a special permit, special permits are good for two years.
Yeah, it's been two years.
Look, I have, can I grant the extension beyond two years?
Yeah.
You haven't granted an extension.
No, it was two years is the normal.
The initial permit was good for two years.
It's two years, and you can extend.
So this would be the first extension.
Right.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor? Anybody here to speak in opposition of the petition? Okay, they're hearing none. Then it comes back to the Board for a, we do have the right to extend, we're only, the petitioner is only asking for a six-month extension, which I think is reasonable.
I'll make a motion to grant it.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? They're hearing none on the motion, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
And Chairman Pereira, yes? Happy safe trip into Boston.
Yeah, thank you. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Into the top of the order for new business, item number one, NNC Central Properties Corporation, care of Attorney Peter A. Salino, 102 Pine Street, map N-10 lot 21. The applicant seeks an after-the-fact special permit to construct four apartment units, a four-apartment unit building. The applicant seeks another special permit to reduce the parking requirements. The property is located in an M multifamily zoning district and an AOD arts overlay district.
Good evening. For record purposes, Peter Salino, 550 Locust Street, Fall River. On behalf of the applicant, NNC Rental Properties Corp., the president of the corporation is here with me to my left. The petition before you is as the application states, "an after-the-fact." However, it's probably not exactly what you think when you hear it, so it's important to go through the history in my mind on this petition. So the history is as follows. On January 16th, 2020, this Board granted a special permit, which afforded the applicant the ability to reconstruct the property, which had been damaged by fire. And the decision indicates that there would be three units, one parking space per unit. The area requirements would be waived, the west setback would be waived, the front setback would be waived, and the rear setback would be waived. And that was recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Subsequent to that, my client applied for a building permit and received a building permit for a four-unit building. So the fourth unit was not built without a permit, there was a building permit. The anomaly was discovered in site plan review. And so at that point in time, they were sent to the Zoning Board for this hearing on the fact that there is a four-unit building that is built. The special permit was for three, but the building permit was for four. In terms of the substance of the waivers, the waivers would be as follows. What is actually on the ground is four units and seven parking spaces. So they, I filed that as a special permit because it's in an AOD. So we need a waiver as it relates to one parking space. Additionally, from an area perspective, the pre-existing lot has 5,625 square feet. If you go by the requirements in that district, it would be 9,500 feet. The lot coverage is supposed to be 25%. On the ground, it's 80%. The west setback is five, it's supposed to be 10. The front setback is five, it's supposed to be 12. The rear is 12, it's supposed to be 15. So the waivers, to recap, would be parking area, lot coverage, west setback, front setback, and rear setback. I submit to the Board that what is actually built was, is, in my view, better than what was approved in the 2020 special permit because of the parking. At that time, they were approved for three parking spaces, and now they have seven. So the parking is actually much closer than it was in the original approval. Although it's filed as a special permit, and I don't need to argue hardship, I would support, or I would point out that the hardship to the client would be that if this Board finds that it cannot grant the requested relief, then unfortunately, the reality here would be that a unit would have to be removed, which would require significant structural alterations and a great cost to my client. And lastly, to drive home the point, this was not built without a permit. It was built with a permit, so I don't think that, you know, it's as untoward as it seems. I know the Board's not, you know, in favor of after-the-fact petitions, but again, this wasn't something that was built on a Sunday afternoon.
So, since I'm an historian, help me with the history here. We granted a three-unit.
Correct.
When did this go to planning? Because you made it sound like you got the building permit before you went to the planning Board for site plan review.
Yeah, he built it first, and then, no?
So the relief was granted for three units, went through site plan review for three units, was built. I don't have a copy of a building permit, so I don't know if you submitted such.
Okay, yeah, I don't have that.
But you may want to submit that, or maybe a letter from the building department, because I know they've sat on this for about a year. It was at the time of as-built and a request for occupancy that it was observed to be a four-unit building.
But the building permit says four units.
I don't know.
That's what I'm, that's what I need to see. Okay.
And the plan that went to the building department.
Correct.
Okay. You have that information?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, so I'd be able to table it then, because you have to provide that information. Okay?
And I can offer originally the, the reduction in parking down to three spaces. The purpose behind that was to create green space and limit the lot coverage.
Uh huh.
So it was a, a total package kind of a thing, where one space was sufficient so that they could have some green space in the rear of the yard as well, so that's why the parking was limited to three. That would not be the case.
Did, did we do away with the green space, or?
Yeah, they did away with the green space, yeah.
85%, 80% coverage.
Okay, so the request is building permit and the site plan submitted, or the plan submitted in conjunction with the building permit?
Correct.
All right, as a result of the request, members of the Board, I'd make a motion to table this matter to the January hearing so that I can supplement the filing with the requested information.
Appreciate that. Motion, members of the Board?
Yeah, I'll make it go forward without it.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second. You take that to the January meeting? You can?
Yes, please.
January 18th.
January 18th, 2024, full new year. All right, second, that was you, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. On the motion, then, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Pereira, yes? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item number two, Keen Multi LLC, care of Attorney Peter A. Salino, 30 Keen Street, map J-06 lot 10. The applicant seeks a special permit to convert, convert the pre-existing non-conforming four-unit dwelling into a five-unit dwelling, also seeking waivers for lot coverage and parking requirements in the S single-family zoning district.
Good evening. For purposes of the record, Peter Salino, on behalf of the applicant. With me is John Peters, who's a manager of Keen Multi, which owns the property located at 20 Keith Street. The, Mr. Peters' organization bought the property in August, and at the time that he bought the property, there was an apartment in the basement. And when he went to City Hall or came here to talk to the building department, it was determined that that fifth unit was not an approved unit, notwithstanding the fact that it's entirely built in there. I'd like to submit pictures also of the five meters for the record.
Okay. Pretty good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that picture for the record was taken by Mr. Peters in the basement of the subject dwelling. So this is filed as a special permit, and the, obviously, as the Chair read, the purpose is to keep that fifth unit that is there. We've had petitions like this certainly before the Board previously, whereby someone buys something that has an apartment in it that's not recognized by the city. I've explained to my client the need for parking and the concern for parking, and as a consequence of that, the proposal includes enlarging the existing driveway to accommodate five spaces off-street. The permit, in effect, would be addressing the lot coverage, which would be 70% with this new extension on the easterly side of the property. And parking would also be a waiver because we would need to have 10 spaces, and we have five off-street. In terms of addressing the detriment component, I'd first submit that the apartment's already there. So at some point, I don't know how recently, it had to have been used as an apartment, and it didn't have that enlarged driveway. So I'd submit to you that he's bettering the property in that way. The five meters clearly depicts that it was there, and this is not some sort of made-up story. I think it's important to the analysis that the property is a dead-end street, because a lot of times we talk about through traffic and plows and things of that sort. And then finally, I think the proposal's consistent in the sense that, notwithstanding the fact that it's a single-family district, when you look at Mr. Toman's plan, you'll see multifamily dwellings surrounding the locus and a couple of single families, but really, I see multifamilies all around it. So I'd submit to you that I think this is an appropriate use of the property. I don't think it's more detrimental than what's there because it's there, and we'd ask the Board to grant the petition. Mr. Peters or I could answer any questions the Board may have surrounding the petition or the building itself.
Appreciate it. The nonconformity already exists. I did note on this photo, it looks like there's a blank meter socket there, was that, do you know, maybe for a house meter?
So there, there was actually two units in the basement at one time, operating six units.
Wow, okay. So there were six at one point, okay. All right.
Are they being combined?
Meaning in the two basement units, the proposal is for one unit?
It's for one unit, yeah. We haven't developed a floor plan for the basement unit yet, awaiting your guys' decision on this.
Okay, so you're kind of, you're starting from scratch on the basement?
Again, it's, there's carpet down.
Yeah.
There's finish, you know, wall finishes and ceiling finishes up. I don't know that we would keep that configuration, we might modify it a bit, maybe make it smaller, maybe make it bigger, I'm not sure.
Okay.
If there's a lot of room down there.
All right, that's fair. I have a question regarding parking. When I went down there, there were like vehicles up against, right, right against the end of the, the street, and it's not a cul-de-sac, so there's no place to go. I don't know if they were tenants from your building, but they were kind of parked up against the, the property that's.
The one that's labeled 59 All Slot?
Yeah, 59.
So the, the building is currently vacant tenants. We're in the process of doing some minor repairs, painting the walls, we actually just re-roofed the building. So I'm not sure who was parked there.
Okay, no, no idea. It was just, obviously, it's crowded, it's a narrow, it's a narrow street back there, et cetera. Questions from the board, comments from the board at this point?
So you don't know how many bedrooms that basement unit's going to be?
I mean, we, the intent would make it at least a two-bedroom, but, you know, if you guys decide a one-bedroom would be okay, we'd take that as well. Currently, it's a two-bedroom, that's what it's now. And then at some, I'd have to say, at some point, there was a six-unit down there that was vacated decades ago.
Anyone else?
So you're looking at a maximum of five parking spaces?
That's what we can fit, Mr. Frank, yes.
So now, virtually zero green space, right? Are you gonna, what's the lot coverage going to be at the end of it?
Is 70 percent.
I have the funny feeling this building existed before this was made a single-family district.
Most of that, that's normally the case.
Yeah. Comments from engineering planning?
No, just if you do decide to move it forward, site plan review?
Yeah.
If you require specifically dealing with stormwater runoff or the increased impervious surface.
Yeah, this is a lot of coverage. Any other questions from the board at this point before I go to the public?
Is this one motion, Mr. Chairman? We need two motions.
It would be, and I still have to go to the public, but the, the motion that it would not be
Detrimental.
More detrimental to the neighborhood, and then the motion to approve.
Do you need another one for parking as well?
Yeah.
So three.
So turning to the, the public at this point, is there anybody here to speak in behalf of this petition in favor? Is there anyone here to speak?
More?
An opposition.
Oppositions.
Okay. Are you the owners, or?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to add your name and address for the, for the record, please?
Michael Maderas, Mr. and Mrs. Michael Maderas, 77 Allop Street.
Okay, so you're right behind it.
The only one that got notified on that side of the building, along my, both the side, both the, both sides of me, have never notified. They both have bought this property.
Which was the?
The only one that got notified.
Fifteen?
County Street and 59 Allop. 1359 County Street, never notified, and 59 Allop Street, never notified. They have bought both of that, they have bought that property.
59 Allop Street was notified. 59.
By me.
No.
No, their names are listed on the certified abutters list, and that's where the mailings go.
I talked to him, he said he was never notified.
Well, that doesn't mean that he wasn't notified.
Maybe the mailman, or maybe he threw it away.
But by the requirements of this board,
Understandable.
The notices went out to all of your abutters on your abutters list.
And County Street.
The other was 1359 County Street?
1359 was also mailed out.
Alicia Carrero.
Yeah.
It was also mailed out.
Blisher and Taylor Carrero. And these go up via certified mail, so? No, they don't, I'm sorry.
They don't go out certified, but they, they come back and if it's not
Yep.
open, if it's not taken out of the mailbox within five days, they come back to us.
Okay. All right. Anyone else to speak in, well?
Well, he hasn't offered, I don't think, I don't think he's offered an argument yet, whether he's for or against, other than notification. So if you'd like to elaborate on this, opposition?
Well, there is a certified abutters list that it's created. And is certified by the city clerk's office, correct?
By the assessor.
By the assessor's office.
Notification was made in accordance with the statute. If he has opposition, we'd like to hear it.
We can get past that?
Yeah, what's, what's your opposition?
Can I, can I speak?
Yes.
Please.
Am I allowed to present them?
Yes.
Can I get up?
Yes, please, come forward.
Rather than just speak?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, sure.
Regarding the non-conformity dwelling unit property on 20 Keen Street, in a single family zone, petitioner is requesting a wave requirements of a single-family zone and a single family, my family opposes. We purchased our single-family home in a single-family area for a good reason. We didn't want, one of the big reasons was we didn't want to have streets, parking lots, in our immediate backyard. We didn't want problems associated with the car lot in our backyard outside our bedroom windows, just like some of the other homes that we had looked at when we were purchasing our home that we passed on. Nice homes, just in the wrong place, wrong crowded place. Proposal lot does not leave enough room to turn one car around in there right now, never mind four. Take a car down there right now and turn it around, you won't be able to turn it around, never mind three other cars pop there. And there's an eight, seven to eight-foot retaining wall on the east side, protected by nothing but a chain link fence. I can't see how any vehicle will be able to turn around and park and drive, and then drive off. You can clearly see it on the plans, there's no place at all, and in the pictures that I just presented, please. Never mind the front driveway where they plan to park the car in the front, and they're going to need a driveway he's been going through. I don't see how that's going to work. What about the headlights and shining, headlights shining in my property and my bedroom windows? All the noise associated, like music, exhaust, doors banging, et cetera. And then, and then the lot will need, obviously, illumination, which would be illuminated in my yard along with my, along with my other neighbors around me as well. Petitioner wants to increase the coverage to 70 percent for now, what about down the road, where nobody's looking? Those little pieces of unpaved spots are going to need some type of saw, care, what's stopping them from paving over them later on when nobody's looking? What about runoff? If you're going, if you're going to cover that much of that lot, there is all the dirty water from the cars and rain, and treated snowplow, treated snowmelt going to go, snowplowing. Where are they going to push the snow up against my fence, the new meltup against my property and foundation? And my neighbor's house. It's all downhill from the street to my property and my neighbor's house. Very little unpaved to exor anything. In a single-family zone, I don't see how four or five car lot, four or five lots in this area because it's a single-family zone and a single fam, you don't see many lots in this area because it's a single-family zone. And it's non-conforming now, why am I going to turn it into a five to increase the parking dilemma? Opposed driveways, dysfunctional band-aid, for what they need for a four-unit, mind the five. And, and it still will be non-conforming after all said and done. The city's, the city has zones, codes, regulations for many reasons. One of which is to protect homesteads like at this time. Petitioner's parking problem shouldn't take away from quality of life and quality of my family that has strived for and has had over, has had over for 20, over 20 years, only to lose it because of an LLC who is out of town looking to make capital gain without any care about the families that live around the cash collar. The parking lot, the parking lot that the petitioner is looking to construct will be taking much away from my property's quality of life that we've grown to enjoy. And there's value in having a quiet backyard and joy and peacefulness, we hold dearly. This lot will have an indoor and outdoor quality and impact on my family and myself. With all the noise, vehicles coming and going outside my bedroom windows, we don't want, we don't want this to be, we don't want this when buying our home back in the day, we don't want it now. This is going to make an unfair change in our life, someone, for someone else's gain. There has to be a better park, there has to be a better parking plan to be used in that small odd space lot. Odd-shaped lot from the make of the property constructed, property to construct the makeshift parking places. The proposed has flaws that we are going to have to force deliver alongside of. Three minutes is no means enough time to explain the severity of this proposal and the outcome of my property. Please, have some consideration for my family. And lot coverage for now, take better look at, take a better look at this proposal and keep in mind, the more units, the more vehicles. Question to waive it down to one vehicle per unit, usually it's more like two to three vehicles per unit?
No.
Please take more time in looking at this proposal before making a decision, it's going to have a massive impact on my family. Michael Maderas, 77 Allop Street.
Thank you for your input. What's the coverage currently, percentage of coverage?
Fifty, I think, what the plan says.
I can point out some things on those pictures if you'd like me, please.
Hang on, please. Just, just hold, please. One point, was this a four-family when you moved in?
It was a four-family that's been, has, I guess people squatting in it maybe for 20 years? There's been a couple apartments that were filled, that's it. Apartment in the bottom, I knew the person that owned the house. The bottom apartments are pretty ratty, there's one in the corner that's a cave, I'm thinking it may be the fifth one that they're talking about. So like little tiny windows in it and stuff.
Okay, simple question, but, so it was a four-family, it was a four-unit, probably when you, when you purchased the property?
Yes, unused, not being fully used, correct.
Okay, and, and sounding like it, it's not in good condition, and we have an owner now that seems to want to do some renovation on this property, and whether it's four or five, doing renovation on it, that's going to bring it up. You brought up a concern about runoff, et cetera. Please keep in mind, that is not under the purview of this body, this is the Zoning Board of Appeals. We deal with the uses of property, the planning board will have to hear this if we, if we approve it to move forward, in order to
Site plan review, not?
Site plan review. In order to, it's still the planning board, but in order to talk about such things as drainage runoff, et cetera, that, that falls under, under their purview. So, we're land use, and it's, it's either a thumbs up, thumbs down, or some type of conditions, et cetera, that we can overlay strictly from the property use standpoint. And then, the, the other issues of green space, runoff, et cetera, falls under site plan review. So we're at 50 right now on coverage, this bumps it up to 70
Correct.
with, with a fifth parking space, et cetera. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I'm allowed to, since I look across the street, I don't know if...
Yes, yeah, absolutely. If you can state your name and address, please?
Eric Amaral, 27 Keen Street, Fall River.
Okay.
So again, we appreciate the, the property manager company and the owner, et cetera, of the neighborhood. Obviously, it's been a, I wouldn't say abandoned, as there have been people living there, but, you know, there's been disarray with that property for a long time, so that we do appreciate it. However, I think the bigger issue that we have is, you know, again, adding an additional apartment, you know, around a 400-foot street and at the dead-end part where I live and have to deal with snow plowing in the winter. I, I just don't know how with additional property or additional apartment, and what we know of when there was four apartments there, the number of vehicles that were there, we ran into a lot of issues. Again, we don't want to be negative, because we know that, hey, you know, someone's buying into their property and wants the better of the neighborhood. However, we do have concerns, because again, we've been there, I've lived there for over 18 years. My in-laws have been there for over 35, this young lady here, frankly, has been over 60. So again, and the neighbors to the side have been over 80. So we're, you know, it's a very small, a close-knit little neighborhood. And again, we just, from our standpoint, with the additional request of the apartment and, you know, the parking situation that we had at the end, when the previous owner had the facility before it was sold, there was always a number of issues. I do have some photos here at the end of the street, if you'd like to see what that looks like from a dead-end standpoint, if I can present that.
I mean, we can, we can take it in, I was out there the other day. As far as off-street parking, how many off-street parking spaces does your property have, just for example?
Like my property?
Yes.
Two parking spots right there, that's the two vehicles that you see.
And that's a three-family, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And, I don't know about the others, I'm not quite sure. Okay, so it's not really a driveway, it's just that turn-in on the front of the property. Yeah, when I was down there, where these barrels are, there were, there were vehicles parked.
Yeah, so what ends up happening is like, so those barrels were a property that's in question. They just put those there, because again, they did a nice job cleaning up the property. And like I said, we're not, I don't want to be negative against, you know, the betterment that they're doing, but again, the effect that it has on us, especially on the winter, during the winter months, I end up getting my snowblower up to end up snowblowing what the plows dropped there, like in that front part. So those barrels are, they just plow everything right in front. So you can imagine, it's, you know, we don't park our vehicles there. We have one spot in front of our house that we used to park a vehicle, but parking was so tough that my in-laws went from a two-vehicle home to a one-vehicle home because of the issues that we're having in the neighborhood, parking.
Yep, and unfortunately, in a city like this, with some of the, some of the odd streets that we have, it's a recurring, I live in a major street, and I lose, at a four-way intersection, I lose use of a big ton of sidewalk every, every major snowstorm, so.
Like I said, you know, previous owners, they, they really, the previous owner passed away years ago, and, you know, talking about the basement apartment, that's been abandoned for at least, at least eight years, if I'm not mistaken. When the person who lived in that basement apartment passed away. So again, I know that, you know, try to put that, another, either a single fam, one-bedroom or two-bedroom, again, is it one more vehicle, is it two more vehicles adding to the other four? You know, they, they had difficult times parking in that structure now, where realistically, you know, before it goes into the backyard, they tried to fit four vehicles, sometimes five. And then they would take that front part of the, where the dead-end is, so technically that roadway, they would park additional vehicles there. So it's just, it was a very tight situation, so, again, with the additional dwell, additional apartment, you know, we're concerned that, again, it's just going to add another vehicle or two on top of already a very tight space.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure it's difficult, you've got two parking spaces, if anybody has a guess, where do they park?
Exactly, like, so like at the holidays, I end up moving my car all the way in as far as I can. I have, you know, folks park behind me, park in front of me, block us in, just that way we're not, you know, we're not blocking other folks on the street. Also trying to back out of my driveway, if there's vehicles parked there, I do have to back into that other property in order to make the turn to go down Keen Street. So, it just, it's a very tight end of the street, so that's the biggest concern that we have, on that side.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the input.
I think we have no more?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Jerry Amaral, no relations. I live 39 Keen Street, about 40, 40 feet from, from 20, 24, 26 Keen Street. Keen Street is 400 feet long, it's like about 25, give or take a couple of feet wide. We have 14, it's all double-family houses, we have 14 tenements on that street. There's three single houses on that street, eight driveways, two of which are double driveways. Eric's driveway and my neighbor Alice across the street's driveway, which is quite adjacent to, and rededged as this gentleman. You mentioned those barrels, those barrels were never there. When they were selling the property, the real estate agency hired a company to come in cleaning out furniture and a lot of trash bags and stuff like that. And when they were cleaning it out, they're the ones that put those barrels at the end of the street. Those barrels were technically on the side of, of 20 Keen Street, right where like the driveway is. It's, the people, as now goes, it's kind of, it's very tight, because we have 14 families. There's one person across the street that has four houses. My house, we have two, you know, we all, at the end of the day, when everybody is parked on, let alone not blocking the driveways, the streets, it's just very difficult and it's very tight.
I understand, and, and you understand, even if we're to, if we were to deny the fifth unit, it's still going to be a four-unit building? That, that already exists.
Right. But like I said, you know, with the, with the 14 tenements, figure two cars, you know, there's, two cars per a tenement, you know, we've already got a bunch of cars on the street. What he wants to add, if there's two more cars, there can be anywhere from 10 to 15 more cars, which are not going to fit in the backyard, and unfortunately, not on the streets, because the street is so skinny and...
With all due respect, there are some houses right now that don't even meet, on this street, that don't even meet the one-to-one requirement. That, or, and actually, the downsized requirement that we've passed in other places. So there are houses that have, do not So, there are houses that have, do not account for three parking spaces for three, for three apartments. And again, something that's very typical in a city of Fall River. So, it, it's, it, I understand the concern, but somehow or another, at one point in its life, this got to be a five or possibly a six-unit house, probably long before there was zoning, and it is a four now, and it is in a single-family zoning district, so that makes it a little bit more difficult. I understand, and, and that looks like a tight, a tight parking space. But by the same virtue, having to use that in order to, to back out of a driveway, it's still somebody else's property. So, i- it's a matter of, you know, what do we do to make a situ, not make a situation worse? The first, you know, the, the first vote that we have to take is, is this substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? And if it's yes, if it's, yes it is, then, then we don't go any further. But that's a determination that we have to make based on your input, based on the fact that we've, you know, most of us have been out and physically taken a look, to look at the neighborhood to understand what we've got...
Yes.
You know, et cetera. It's tough. We got tough little streets like this tucked all around the city, and as soon as somebody wants to come in, and the good news is, somebody wants to come in and rehab this property. That's great news.
Yes.
And, and I'm sure, you know, it was a nice little neighborhood.
It is.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, it, it might make sense to offer or allow the applicant to reconsider maybe a different design, I mean, looking at this, I can see the potential of maybe getting to eight spaces. You may need to use porous asphalt, uh, in order to get the lot coverage down, but I think there are things that can be done to potentially respond to some of the abutting concerns. There could be screening in place, uh, whether through fencing or plantings for the abutting single-family uses, reconfiguration of parking, um, and different types of surfaces and drainage that you could require them to provide, uh, to ensure that the increased runoff will not be detrimental to the neighbors. Some topography maybe, so you can get an understanding of where is the water going? Is it running to, you know, what, what is downstream? Is water running to the street? Is water running to the single-family dwellings, um, around it?
Mostly our basements.
Right, yeah. So, I, again, I don't want to, I don't want to direct the applicant which, which way to go, but I, I think there's room for some improvement on, on the plan as well, if, if they wanted to consider that, or you would allow them to consider that before making a decision.
Yeah, I mean, I do have concern about the parking layout, to be, to be absolutely honest with you.
I mean, I understand trying to keep the impervious area down, um, but that can be done through different means, you know, like using porous pavers or porous asphalt, if it's, if it's that important to, to get the additional unit.
Hang on just a second. Okay, yes.
Sorry, sir, I did have a question for the property manager company. Is there any discussion of taking any part of, because again, it's a very narrow part from their, uh, front door to the street. They weren't planning on taking any or trying to petition for any street parking, right, to make that permanently part of their property?
No, we couldn't do that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because that, again, it's like literally a couple of feet, so we just wanted to make sure that that...
You can't petition for, for on-street parking.
It either is or it isn't.
It is or it isn't, so...
I just wanted to make sure, because again, I, I just, I was trying to decipher, uh, from the site plan up top, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't, I, I did have another point in the backyard, just for this, you know, because again, I, I've had, uh, we mowed the lawn for the old couple across the street, so we get to see that part of the property. From there, from the property here to the adjacent properties, there is, um, a drop-down, so at least a good, I'd say, five feet, if not more, again, I'm not an engineer, so...
It drops down to the neighbor, or the neighbor drops down to here?
No.
Which one's lower?
To the neighbor.
So, the neighbor is lower?
Yeah.
So, headed towards the Madeiras property at seventy-seven, or headed towards thirteen-fifty-nine County?
Both of us.
Okay.
Retaining wall that goes right around the whole corner of their property, mine's about two feet, it goes up further as it goes towards Colony. Colony Street property is about six to seven-foot retaining wall, with four-foot chain-link fence that goes along it. You can see it in the fence.
Yeah.
Uh, I can see it in the fence, excuse me. You can see it in the pictures that I showed you. The house is low, it's, it's a major drop on that back side. I'd love to point out something else on that fence right there, that's why they're parking.
Get right ahead.
Can I stand up?
Please.
Just like a point, please?
There's one right behind you, Michael, right there.
Even better.
Even better.
On this, on this right side, right here, J-six, there're two parking places right there. How are they going to turn around? They can't, what are you going to, just pull right in and have to back all the way out? They're not going to be able to back up to that retaining wall and fall off that wall into my neighbor's house. There's no room for that. That little, little right here and the little spot there, that's useless. And what about these parallel parking cars?
Okay, but, sir, we're...
There's no room for the parallel parking.
They'd have to, they'd have to back up. That, that's obvious.
All the way out?
Just like everybody else backs out of there.
Just like everybody else, who backs out, has to go onto this property. Yes, they'd have to back up.
And in the front over here, one parking place right there, that's, the pictures I could do, you can see, there is no room to park a car there and actually have a physically working driveway going down there, without going into the neighbor's property. And I am very concerned about the runoff, because it is all downhill. You can put porous...
And again, that's not under our purview.
I'm sorry, I...
That's quite all right, but...
No, the lot coverage is.
Lot coverage is.
Mr. Chairman, may, may my client respond, please?
Please.
Thank you.
I just want to make a point, where that retaining wall is, we would put our guardrail up, obviously. We don't want to see any cars accidentally go over that retaining wall.
It makes the space even more smaller. They're not going to be able to properly use that space as a driveway, because it's so bloody small, and it narrows up at the corner of the house.
Sir, sir, with all due respect, this is not a debate.
I understand.
We understand exactly how you feel, all right?
We're, we're going to take more cars off the street with this parking plan.
I feel bad for my neighbors on the street.
Sir, please.
I'm sorry.
Okay, please, you've made your point, I understand, and we appreciate your coming out, but this is not a running debate, and I will not have my meeting interrupted. Thank you. How many spaces are there right now?
Three.
Three, kind of.
Yeah. Three and a half.
Can we do, aside from a guardrail, can we take a look at this parking situation? And try to better this, go back to, go back to your engineer and see what else we can come back with? It's up to you. Otherwise, we vote on it the way it is.
Yeah, let me just have a quick minute, Mr. Chairman. Yep. So, you can take one, that's my box, I think, and then we can...
There's nothing else to see, uh, there's no way to do this, but I see this much parking space.
Yeah.
I have another question. Just curious on how many bedrooms are in the other four apartments?
Yeah.
Is it relevant?
Yeah, that's a very other question.
It's relevant to the lot coverage. So, when you deal with zoning, one of the ones is lot coverage, and you're upset about it? We could defer our... Basically, what I'm hearing is, there's a, you know, what can happen if we can address some of the concerns? The question is, is my client available to come back to you, or are you withdrawing? Are you...
My client, we just, we're going to go work, we're going to see a vote on it, like, well, you can't, if you, if you, you know, there's snakes here. So, if we get stick one, and run it for the four years, and then for two years, you can't come back. I don't see why we can't just go, we just can't, we can't, just like... That's the only change we can make.
Yep. Okay. I mean, you can turn, you can, I rip like that, okay? Uh, Mr. Chairman, my client is willing to make the driveway, uh, pervious material as opposed to impervious material, if that would better the, uh, proposal.
What are the size of these parking spaces as drawn? Because there's no...
They're labeled down there, nine by eighteen perpendicular, nine by twenty for the parallel spaces.
Ah, sorry.
How many bedrooms are in the, uh, the other four apartments?
Uh, there are two beds.
Two bedrooms.
Any other questions from the board?
Just addressing some of the site issue, uh, lighting, is there any, out of the vegetated border between the two properties?
Um, we haven't really gotten there yet, because in my mind, that's more of a site plan thing, but John, are you opposed to putting some trees up to buffer the...
I'm opposed to...
See if they come back, right?
I'm in favor of doing anything that's fair and equitable for abutting neighbors.
Well, I'm sure when you get to site plan, if you get to site plan, you know, the, the...
A condition like that would have to come from this board, because there, there is no requirement of a guy experiencing...
No, I understand that, I understand that. I'm thinking of the issue of, of drainage, et cetera.
Yep.
You know, I didn't go into the back, I don't know what the, you know, that, that drop-off is. You could see there was drop-off, I don't know how bad it is, I don't know what that does to you as far as your parking. It's tight. You know, somewhere, somewhere in time, that started off as probably a single-family home or a two-family home, and grew into a four, and that's, that's what we got. Except for any questions that may came up, come up, your, your presentation is complete. So, that means, like, with the consideration of pervious material for parking, uh, no change in layout.
Frankly, my client doesn't think he can change the layout too much to be, really, to address. I mean, there's certain constraints to the site.
In that case, it comes to us. We've heard, uh, is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition at this point? Okay, we've heard from three directed abutting neighbors, uh, with their concerns. If you've been out there, you understand that it's tight, you understand that, you know, parking is difficult. We have a developer who's trying to come up with a parking plan that, in some cases, if it's five units, there's five parking spaces, we're in a better situation than some of the existing, the existing properties out there. Although it's going to be tight, somebody comes in with a Ford F-two-fifty, I don't know where he's going to put it. But that's typical-sized parking spaces at nine by eighteen feet, so, um, that's the way to go. We would have to, uh, we would have to determine if this is, uh, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and then we would have to address the, the question of the special permits that are being asked for, to increase the, uh, number of units from four to five, and the, uh, the parking question. It's where we get to do our jobs, kids.
I'll make a motion that it is more, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Motion's been made that it's more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second? Second on that from Dan DePere, discussion on that motion? Hearing...
We're in a dista quandary, because the provision of the additional parking makes it a better for, as exists now, but, but it, we go to another unit, then we're, it, it does become a detriment there, additional.
Motion stands. On the motion, Dan, um, I'm sorry, Ricky Sadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Uh, Jim Calkins?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes?
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Peter.
Yes.
I need those pictures.
You have to talk to the assistant planner, you're getting... Item number three, Dark LLC, Peter Ace, K-Rod, attorney Peter Ace Salino, seven-nine, uh, seven-oh-nine Broadway, map G-twenty-two, lot three. The applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to eighty-six dash four-twenty-four and eighty-six dash four-twenty-five of the City of Fall River zoning ordinance to convert the pre-existing non-conforming funeral parlor into a two, uh, two-dwelling units, uh, a three-bedroom and a studio unit. The property is located in an R-four, two-family zoning district.
Good evening, for the record, Peter Salino, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this property, for reference purposes, is the former Boyko Funeral Home, seven-oh-nine Broadway. The property as it sits had this funeral parlor on the first floor, and two apartments upstairs. The proposal is to convert the funeral parlor into two apartments, one would be a three-bedroom unit, one would be a studio unit. Uh, the parking, in this instance, is rather plentiful. Uh, there are fourteen spaces on the ground now. Obviously, it's supported a commercial use previously. You have a point of ingress and egress from Broadway, you have a point of ingress and egress from Sprague Street, so I think traffic, uh, is not an issue, parking is not a request. It's really just about the change of use, uh, to alter the funeral home component of the building, um, which is no longer occupied or used as a funeral home. So, I would submit to you that this is far less detrimental to the neighborhood from a density perspective. Uh, when you'd, obviously, when you have a funeral or a wake, there'd be cars in the parking lot on Broadway and on Sprague. This is not that, and, uh, I think the proposal's entirely reasonable with a pre-existing building that's no longer used as a funeral home.
Succinct. I have very few questions on this one.
I have none.
Excellent.
I think it's a good reuse of a, of a property, specifically where there's another funeral home, two doors down, so...
Going to have Goth people cruising in looking for apartments, I'm sure. But, any questions from the, from the board? Since this is the special permit, we would have to, oh, I'm sorry, to the general public, anybody here to speak in behalf of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition to the proposal? They're hearing none. It comes to the board. Uh, this would require a, a motion regarding the, uh, impact upon the neighborhood, substantially...
Mr. Chairman, I know that we find that it would not be substantially more detrimental to the area, and that we grant the board the, um, special permit. Second.
Motion and second, comments on the motion? They're hearing none on the motion. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Prairie, yes?
Thank you.
It's one of those nights, Peter.
I got a second.
No, we combined them, so... Item number four, Manual of Rudah, K-Rod attorney Gregory Brant, uh, zero Tilson Street, map C dash forty, uh, four, I'm sorry, four-oh-four, I'm sorry, oh-four, I'm doing okay. Lot twenty-four, applicant seeks a variance to demolish the existing twenty-foot by forty-foot garage into constructing new thirty-foot by forty-foot garage to be used in association with a landscaping business, waiving use, lot area, lot frontage, lot coverage, trifecta, and setback requirements in an A-two apartment zoning district. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Attorney Gregory Brant, on behalf of Manual of Rudah. Solicitor is here before you, uh, tonight, requesting permission to demolish the existing garage located at zero Tilson Street, and to erect a new structure, forty by forty, as shown on the plan submitted. Um, the same waivers relative to use, lot area, lot frontage, lot coverage, and setback requirements are in effect. The existing garage, just so, and I know many of, of the board members go by the, the areas, is quite simply in deplorable condition.
Yep.
Deplorable. I mean, people are going to actually get hurt. Not going to that and speaking to the neighbors what they had to say. Okay, it's just the roof is caving in. Um, it's the subject of people that are living there. In fact, I was told by one of the neighbors in speaking with them that there, they actually, somebody died in there. Somebody was actually living there. It was abandoned and they were, they died. They found them dead. Um, so the neighbors are very concerned, very concerned about the actual building itself and the dangerousness of that building. They're also very concerned because no one's even monitoring the use of the building. In the spring, people just come, come and go on the property and have bonfires. And that the budding neighbor, a very nice lady named Ms. Levine told me that she gets so afraid because they're drinking and the bonfire's going and it's all, as you can see, there's all shrubs all around. She is deathly afraid that there's going to be a massive fire. Okay, so the new structure, as I said, is a forty by forty building. It has a three garage doors. The height of the building is fifteen feet. My clients intend to fence it in through all the landscaping, which is obviously their business. It'll be well lit and resurfaced. Okay, so it'll all be redone. The one change right now, if you went out to the, to the site, is that the garage doors, what's left of them, are on Tilson Street. Okay, what my client suggested do is when he puts up the new building, he wants to put it in the same exact spot, but the garage doors will now be on Eclipse Street and he will use that frontage for his, uh, trucks. He's got four of them. That, well, it's two, there's.
Four or three?
Four, four trucks. Um, and it's going to be used for his landscape business. They've been in business for twenty years. But they've lived in the neighborhood. They, they actually live at four fifty and four. Excuse me, let me make sure I get those, those right. I think it's four fifty and four sixty-two, um, Montop Street. So they've been in the, they've been in the neighborhood for actually thirty to thirty-five years. The business has been in existence for twenty years. Right now, they have four employees, okay, including Mr. Aruda and his son, who actually run the business. The hours of operation on the business are going to be Monday through Friday, six to six. Saturday, six to one P. M., no Sundays. Relative to all their machinery and everything they use, that is going to be stored inside the building. There will be nothing out front. Okay, and to the extent they can put the trucks inside the building, they're going to do that. So in, in terms of what they're going to see out there, it's going to be completely clean and it's going to be, in my opinion, a benefit to the, to the neighborhood. I just want everybody to know, I spoke to the director of butter, Ms. Fay personally. I spoke to director of butter, Ms. Levine personally. I spoke to Pereira's Auto Sales personally. The only person I didn't get to talk to was Ms. Benavides, who was in a butter, but I knocked on her door twice, but she wasn't home. The neighbors are ecstatic about that. They did have, they did have a question about plowing. My clients do plow, but they, they don't have any big commercial accounts. They're, they're not in there at night unless there's an absolute emergency and, and the, and the neighbors were very, very happy about all that. As I say, a lot of times we come before this board and as an attorney, we have to stretch the hardship. There is a hardship here. It's the building itself and, and the neighbors are very worried about the building. They all feel that this is going to be a tremendous benefit to the neighborhood. So the building itself, the structure and its existing condition is a hardship because it's completely dilapidated. It can't be saved. It's got to come down. Anybody that's gone by it, I was amazed because it's, it's got trees on it and it's caving in and, and, and it's, it's in very, very bad condition. In terms of the neighborhood itself, if anybody's gone down there, my client is, is, encompasses businesses. Both of his immediate abutters are businesses. One is the liberal club, um, and it has its pavilion. And it's hard to see because this is how bad it is around there, but that's the pavilion for the liberal club where they hold all their fees and then it's the parking lot. And on the other side, on the north, this is Pereira's Garage. It's an auto repair garage. I spoke to them. They would love to have this happen because they're afraid something's going to happen to that fire. They're, they're afraid for themselves. And as I just want to point out, the last thing is, I have spoken to the neighbors and again, I can say, and Mr. Pereira is nodding, I think, because obviously I think he's actually seen it. It's just deplorable.
Yeah.
Something has to be done, um, for the good of the city and I think for the good of the neighborhood. These people are from the neighborhood, again, uh, four fifty and four sixty-two Montops right around the corner. They're from the neighborhood. They're not coming in here to disrupt the neighborhood. That's why I don't think there's going to be any objection, but I'm not sure. I, I know who I've spoken to. But the people I've spoken to from the neighborhood are actually very much in favor of it. Mr. Aruda and his son are here. Um, if there are any other questions or of me as well.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification, I'm looking at the proposal and, um, as you've stated, attorney Billian, it's forty by forty. Yet the agenda has it as thirty by forty.
And the application has it by thirty.
I don't think the application has, I do the application, Mr. Tomlinson, I don't think the application has any size.
The application is specified. In the, in the plan that was submitted, that forty by forty. Initially, when we went to the billing department with a denial letter, the original intent was the forty by thirty and then that changed prior to filing the petition. The applicant decided to change.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the application and it's thirty. It demolished the twenty by forty to construct a new thirty by forty.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, and I, I know, I, I did valid question, Mr. Saadi. I do not think that, and I'll ask Mr. Aguirre too, who may also have, uh, an opinion on it. I don't think anything relative to the garage, it's, it's going to be a non-conforming use. And there's not going to be any difference in the relief sort, although I do agree with you, Mr. Saadi, I don't think there's any difference in the relief sort.
Trying to, it's a protection to you because we've advertised one thing based upon the, the, um, the application and the plans, the plans show the forty by forty.
The, the, when you say the application, are you talking about the denial letter from the building department?
Says thirty by forty.
Yeah, the actual application does not make reference to that. The, the only thing I would add to that is what we're talking about here is not a private garage. So therefore, the size of the structure itself does not require relief.
Yep.
If, if it were a private garage where the, it would be an oversized private garage that would need relief, um, then I could see that being an issue.
Well, my concern is that, uh, as the chairman has pointed out, we advertise it one way and it's being presented another way.
The, yes, uh, it's being presented another way, but the, the expansion, that ten-foot expansion from the thirty to the forty is heading towards Eclipse Street. It was, uh, it, it's not adding any, uh, it, it's not something that needs relief. In other words, if it was, if, if the size of the building needed relief, then I could see that being an issue with the advertising. The size of the building in this case, since it's not a private garage, does not require relief. So, so the size of the actual garage is irrelevant. It's the setbacks of the property lines and the lot coverage issues.
If it was a hundred by forty, it wouldn't be irrelevant.
Right. Well, correct. But in this particular case, um, the relief would still be the same if it were forty by thirty or forty by forty. We're still asking for the same exact relief.
And, and I stand corrected and I apologize, I was looking at the, the building inspector's letter.
Denial.
That has the, the size.
That is part of the application, though. I just want to clarify.
Yeah, we're, we're aware of that, Ms. Kruger. We're not, we're not suggesting that, that's otherwise. I had a conversation with Mr. Mr. Aguirre, um, relative to proceeding because I, I caught it afterwards. And I, just was my opinion again, as I said, I don't think the relief is going to change in any capacity. So I think that the board would be okay in moving forward relative to the petition. Um, that's my opinion, but.
I, I would say if the building was getting ten feet bigger towards Tilson.
Right.
Then you might have a concern, but it, it's always been clear what the setbacks were going to be. And the additional ten feet is internal, but. Noting i's and crossing t's.
I don't want to bring it back if we don't have to.
But the. It's really up to the applicant to decide if, if you, if they want to go forward with a potential deficient petition because if on appeal, they would most likely lose.
Right. Let's talk to the public and see what we get.
I was going to, I was going to ask you that, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone here from the general public that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? We win in so far. It's a fine line and we've pointed it out. And I'm thinking out loud right now, which is dangerous because I'm thinking a lot of things right now. I certainly wouldn't, in the case of an appeal, were we to approve this, you might lose. But whether it's thirty by forty or forty by forty, it fits.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, you could, you could make the determination, although I don't think it was the case, that it could have been a scrivener's error and where the plan clearly illustrates forty by forty. If the plan showed thirty by forty, then it would be a different.
And the approval would be in accordance with the plans as presented, so.
And I do know for a fact that, because I also spoke to the abutters, they understood forty by forty garage.
Just.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just as a point of clarification, um, I, I don't want you to have a misunderstanding that I'm opposed to be.
No, Mr. Saadi, I don't. It's a point well taken.
Yeah, I just, um, wanted to clear it up legally. As the chairman and then Mr. Aguirre has pointed out, perhaps on appeal, it would not stand. But you understand that, uh, going forth this evening, we could approve it with that stipulation, with that understanding, that perhaps, perhaps.
I think we, I, I think I hear it loud and clear and I'm well aware of that, that could be the case. That's why I think what the chairman did here tonight, and I'm not pre, pre-assuming what you're going to do, um, seeing if anybody was here against it, I, I thought was a good idea because if someone was out there, then, then I'd probably say that, don't move forward. But Mr. Aguirre's suggestion, and I agree, it's a stretch, whether it's a scrivener's area, scrivener's error, because the plan does depict forty by forty, if that may be, could be stated in the decision. I, I would appreciate it, um, but again, I don't, I don't, I don't make the motions.
And we have a well-prepared plan by a respected firm and we're going to refer to the plan, so.
Mr. Chairman, in view of the fact that the scrivener's error or whatever it is, that, that in, in the dimensions presented, do not change the nature of the variance needed that I approved that we, uh, grant the petition based upon the plan as submitted.
Second.
The, uh. Well, we had massive conditions, you were going to.
Whoops.
Hold it.
Yeah.
Number of conditions.
What would you like put in, Mr. Aguirre?
Well, that.
It was the.
Storage of all materials should be inside the building with the exception of.
No, no.
Vehicles.
Storage of materials exterior.
Privacy screening. At least a six-foot privacy fence.
Six-foot privacy fence, they mentioned. Hours of operation.
Yep, hours of operation, Monday through Friday, six A. M. to six P. M.
Uh, perhaps with the exception of snow removal.
With the exception of snow removal, yes.
Snow emergency.
Snow emergency removal, yes. Thank you, Mr. Calkins.
And I don't, you might want to make it a condition, but I don't want it to get to site plan review. There is no signage proposed or approved to this petition.
I see that there is no signage in this application, so.
They're planning on just having a wall-mounted sign on the side of the building.
Yeah, and there's nothing lit. We, we, I had already talked to, that's one of the things that the neighbors did, did not want. They didn't want any bright illuminated signs, something, something like the Pereiras have. They have something attached to the building that says Flamingo, it's Flamingo Landscaping.
Non-illuminated.
No signs.
Yep.
I don't think you can approve any sign.
No.
Without seeking that relief.
I don't, I don't think he's looking for walk-in customers anyways.
Can't pull one on the building?
No, I don't think so. No, it's an A two zone, A two zone. I don't think signs, commercial signs are allowed, period.
Okay.
I mean, you, you could make it a condition. You could vote to allow a two-by-four wall-mounted sign if you chose to, but.
If you could, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it, but I do understand again that point.
I just don't want it coming to me for site plan review and then we have to go through this whole thing again.
They're not looking for any illuminated sign and definitely not looking for anything, anything, maybe a small, whatever, as, as Mr..
A, a two-by-four or something like that.
To just say it's there.
Seems to make sense. You guys, that, that's good?
Yes, yes.
Okay. It, it, it is just.
That's next door.
Question.
Yeah.
Um, do you guys do any of the, where do you do the maintenance on your equipment?
Maintenance on the equipment usually is sent out, some maintenance they, they will do inside the building.
Inside.
Yes, that'll all be done inside. Any maintenance on any, any equipment, anything like that will be done inside, not outside.
Okay, and this is a privacy fence all the way around. You lock this up at night so nobody's coming in, monkeying around with anything.
Absolutely.
Again, not within our purview, but again, considering what's happened out there with the, the building that's out there, let's make sure it's something that's.
I've told the neighbors that whatever conditions that, that the board puts on it, we would be amenable to.
Okay. You're in the middle of.
Sorry, you said hours of operation Monday through Friday, six A. M. to six P. M. and then you started saying Saturday and got cut off.
It's six A. M. to one P. M. No Sundays.
Okay.
Again, with the exception of any emergency situations relative to snow removal.
You're in the middle of.
Well, I think I, I just said with these amendments accepted.
Okay, so. That being the case. That being the case, uh, we've got a, a privacy fence, six-foot privacy fence? Is that what we're talking about, six-foot privacy fence all the way around? We are saying a sign, no, a building-mounted sign, no larger than two by four feet. The hours of operations is, is stipulated.
No storage of.
Storage of.
Materials or equipment.
No, yeah, no storage of materials and equipment outside. Can you guys work with that?
Yeah, they don't, they, they get, they don't get the equipment. It may, I don't know how this would work.
I mean, we're not going to have a mulch pile up.
No, no, that's exactly, but sometimes when they do a job, they go get the mulch every day. When they do a job, they come back that night. There might be excess mulch that's left. They're going to take out the next day. Yeah, in the truck, yeah.
I mean, you don't have the space. I mean, we're not going to have.
There's not going to be, I asked that very question.
Cinder block bends with.
Yeah, there's not going to be mulch and dirt and things all over for the neighborhood, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, all right.
And site.
And what?
Site plan.
Site plan review.
Yeah.
Is that it? All the pieces we need?
I'll second that.
Mongrel.
It's, 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 trust me.
We thank you.
It's all written down here. So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? On the motion, Ricky Saadi.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Calkins. John Frank.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. Best of luck.
Members of the board, Mr. Aguirre, thank you so very much for working with us with that. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a great one. Can we have those photos back over here just so we can put them in record? Thank you. All right, item number five, Rodman Enterprises LLC, seven fifty-five Rodman Street. Map I twenty-two, lot thirteen, the applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to eighty-six, four twenty-five of the city of Fall River zoning ordinance to convert the existing, the pre-existing non-conforming three-family dwelling into a four-family dwelling. Another special permit is requested to increase the lot coverage from sixty to sixty-five percent in order to provide additional parking. The property is located in an A two apartment zoning district. For the record, sir.
Uh, good evening. For the record, Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineering, um, here tonight representing Rodman Enterprises LLC, the applicant for this petition. Quite simply, what we're looking to do here is there's existing three-family dwelling on this property with a garage located at the rear. The property was recently purchased by the petitioner, um, in addition to the two adjacent properties, seven forty-three Rodman Street as well as seven, uh, seventy-one Rodman Street. It was a package deal. They bought all three lots. Those three lots have been in common ownership for quite some time. They, uh, although this lot, you know, meets the lot area, the minimum lot si, uh, area for the A two zone, the ten thousand square feet, depending on how you look at it, it is undersized due to the number of units that are on the property. With the, the, the three-family dwelling, uh, it would require fourteen thousand square feet in order to be in compliance. The lot in the corner, seven forty-three, um, Rodman Street is also under start, undersized, excuse me, with the five thousand square feet that it has. So what we're looking to do here, uh, sticking to seven fifty-five Rodman Street, is we're looking to take the garage located at the rear of the property and there's also a, uh, an addition, uh, like a sixteen-foot addition that was provided to the back, which is just, uh, for the first floor use, a portion of that would be incorporated into the new apartment, um, that would be constructed. The access to the apartment would be from the rear of the dwelling. What we'd be doing, looking to do as part of this petition is to reconfigure the parking area. If you drive by this site now, it's a bit of a free-for-all, uh, pavement, uh, quite a bit of pavement everywhere, no striping, no, no direction on, on how to park. What we're looking to do is part of this application and future applications that we'd be coming in with on this property is to straighten, uh, straighten all that out. So strictly speaking on this lot, what we're looking to do is remove quite a bit of the pavement and, and re-construct two, two new parking areas. There'd be a, a six parking spot, parking area located on Rodman Street for the existing three units in the dwelling that locate, I'm sorry, that access to dwelling from the front, from Rodman Street, so they would have six parking spots there, two per unit. And then we'd be constructing a new parking facility that would come in off of Holyoke Street that would provide four off-street parking spots for the new apartment unit, which would be just a single unit. So obviously, meet, uh, well, uh, meeting the standard, going above and beyond the required two spots that would be required for that unit. The unit itself would be ADA accessible, um, which would be an added benefit for the city. There would be one of the spots, if need be, and could be a ADA parking spot with the, the other three being standard nine by eighteen parking spots. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
So, so the intention is at this point to make that, one of those parking spaces specifically H. P.?
Yeah, the, the, the one closest to the building, the ten-foot wide one, and then you have the eight-foot hatched area, although that is not a dimension, that's eight-foot hatched area alongside it.
See that.
For, for loading, um, purposes. The, the garage doors, and, and this was another thing when we looked, when the petitioner bought the property, we started looking at it. The garage door is actually at the rear of the, the garage. It's not on, on either side. So you would have to cross over an abutting property, although it's owned by the petitioner, um, down the road. That may not be the case. So it'd either, either be an easement required or that, you know, there's really no way to use that without going over an abutting property. So it's really, it, it, it doesn't show of a purpose to the existing dwelling as is, and it would make, it makes a ton of sense to me to just expand this and make that an additional, uh, unit to the building.
Okay. Very straightforward. Questions from the board?
The conversion from three units to four. The conversion from three units to four is being done how?
By special permit.
Well, no, I meant addition, just changing of it.
Are you making one unit smaller?
No expansion of the existing structure, just interior changes to the, to the building.
What's the makeup of it now, the three units, bedroom-wise?
That, I'm not 100% certain of. I don't know what the layout is. That particular structure is about 28 by 30 in size. I, I'm not, I have not been inside the building. I don't know if it's either two, it's either two or three-bedroom units.
They're not asking for parking reduction.
Yeah.
No.
Jeff, did you say, you are removing a garage, or just reusing?
Reusing the garage. Yeah, repurposing the garage into the residential unit.
And there will be no second floor in that garage.
So, no, the, the structure would remain as is.
So the garage and that extension that's coming off the.
The sixteen-foot bump out on the first level, that would, you know, no, we're not going any higher. We're not, you know, expanding outwards.
And that's going to be ground level, so it's ADA.
Ground level, ADA accessible.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, any other questions from the board? Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone to speak in opposition? The hearing done. Let's earn those paychecks.
Two votes.
Make a motion that this is not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
I'll second. Second on that by Dan DePere. On the motion, Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
That's covering both conditions.
No.
Well, no, because there are two different special, another special permit. So I have two special permits being requested, so I'm just, which one?
One that it's not more detrimental.
Right.
And actually acting on the special permit.
Now, that's, it's asking for two special permits, so are we voting on both special permits?
We can combine the two special permits.
Well, that's, I'm just asking for, to make sure that the vote is clear.
The project as presented is not more, I'm going to change his wording. The project as presented is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions.
Okay.
All right.
Could we vote on the not detrimental part?
We stopped right here.
Let's vote on that part.
Jim Calkins.
I don't know which.
No, it's just because there's two special permits.
We haven't, we're not there yet.
Two separate special permits.
The.
Well, we're saying neither special permit is more detrimental.
The application as a whole, as presented.
But that's not what we said, so.
That's why I just tried to fix it.
I understand, yeah.
So, yes, if it's combining both special permits are not, are not.
Are not more detrimental.
Correct. And John Frank.
Yes.
Okay. Special permits, which we can combine, or we can take them separately.
I'll make a motion to approve both special permits.
To convert the.
Convert the existing three-family to a four. And then the second one is to increase lot coverage from sixty to sixty-five percent.
A second. Very good. We have a second? Was that you again, Dan? Okay, very good. In that case, on the motion, John Frank.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay. Let's see, number six. I'm probably going to mispronounce this. Denate Goncalves, 896 Highland Avenue. Map, S-07, Lot 23. The applicant seeks a variance to convert the existing three-family dwelling into, I'm sorry, the existing single-family dwelling into a three-family dwelling, unit dwelling. Property is located in S single-family zoning district.
And for the record, Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineering. Here on behalf of Denati Goncalves, the applicant, or petitioner for this variance request before the board. Quite simply, what we're looking to do here is, we have an existing single-family dwelling located in the S single-family district on Highland Avenue. The director Butters on either side, well, this particular home is an old Victorian home that was built, you know, prior to 1900. The existing homes on either side are similar homes built around a similar time, former single-family dwellings. Each one of the abutting houses has been converted to a multifamily use. The house directly to the south, number 878 Highland Avenue, is an existing two-family dwelling. And the house on the north side of this property, number 910 to 914 Highland Avenue, has actually been converted to a three-family dwelling. So what we're looking to do here is, we have, the petitioner has owned this property since 2015.
Is that correct?
Right. So for a little over eight years. The petitioner lives in the house with his wife by themselves. The house itself is roughly about eight, I'm sorry, 4,000 square feet in size. So what they're looking to do is to convert this single-family old Victorian home into a three-family dwelling. And the reason they're looking to do that is so that they do have two adult sons that rent properties that they own in the city now. They're looking to bring them back under one roof, but to give them some private living space. So they would be moving back in on the second and third floor.
Is that correct, occupying?
Yes. Yes. And the petitioner and his wife would, you know, live in the first floor. The, the lot itself, in the driveway, the existing driveway has sufficient area to accommodate six cars. There's an existing three-stall garage located at the rear of the property. And there's sufficient room in front of that garage to provide three additional parking spots in front of each stall, so that each unit could have two, two off-street parking spaces. The property, a portion of the property where the garage is on the southwest corner, is located in the G-zone. If this property was entirely in the G-zone, this would be done by right. You would only need 5,000 square feet for the lot size. And then you would have, you would be allowed to go up to three units in the structure. So basically, we're just asking for relief from the zoning ordinance to be able to use this property in a similar manner as abutting properties are being used in that the abutting zone partially on this property would allow. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
How many bedrooms?
Two bedrooms on each floor.
Hardship? It's a used, it's a used variance, I gotta, I gotta have something.
Yeah. The shape of the lot could be argued, it's, you know, a regular shape. The, the, without this type of relief, the structure itself would be, almost be unusable. You would have to, like, these old Victorian homes in historic islands are, you know, I mean, people aren't having large families like they used to have, with, you know, six, seven children, and it would occupy the house. It's just not happening. So the, this, granting this relief would allow the petitioner to stay in the home, use the home in a manner that's, you know, was sort of intended for to have the family live there, but give them their own private space within, within the house.
And it also changes it in perpetuity. So for the rest of the life of this house, long after this family is no longer there, it's a three-family.
Correct. In a similar fashion as the abutting properties are being used.
Two of them, yes.
Correct.
I understand. The bulk of the neighborhood is still a three-family.
We don't know what the.
Yeah.
What the ground, the grounds for relief on those two were.
And I know, and before you owned it, someone wanted to do exactly the same thing back in 1970s. Make this.
Seventy-three, I think.
Seventy-three, I think, yeah. Make it a three-family, and it was, it was denied at that point in time. Questions, comments from the board?
The current structure lends itself to division into the three.
Yes, yes.
Access is an, or.
Well, they have to meet the building codes, so whatever they would need to do, they would need to do.
I do have the plan for the second means of egress. And the, the house already has three separate furnaces, one for each floor. The electrical has got three separate panels already there. I do have to upgrade two of them. But the only other thing that I got, it's got two kitchens and one kitchenette. The third floor is a whole, it's a whole apartment that's, I don't, probably the reason why they did it, it's got a kitchen, bathroom, everything there. Second floor, it's got a kitchenette, and the first floor, which has got a kitchen. All I got to do is probably put some petitions up to divide the bedrooms.
Thank you.
General public, anybody here to speak in behalf of the petition? Anyone to speak against? All right. It's a used variance. Standard typically for used variances that the property cannot possibly be used for anything else, but. Somebody want to grab a petition? It's either yes or no.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Conditions? None? Okay. Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second from Jim Calkins. In that case, on the motion, Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
John Frank.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, no. Passes.
Thank you.
All right. Citizen input, I don't think anybody signed up. Prove of minutes. Second on that.
Second.
Second, Mr. DePere.
I make a motion to adjourn.
On the motion, let's approve minutes. Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
Dan DePere. Jim Calkins.